The public hearing for school choice. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 12B. Every year, we must have a public hearing on school choice. This is an opportunity for the public to express their views on school choice to the committee. At this hearing, the responsibility of the committee members is to listen, not to express his or her views, debate, or make decisions. The committee will have an opportunity to express their opinion during tonight's meeting. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Donna, is there anyone in the chat? Just make sure I don't miss anything.
Hello, this is Jamie Pope, and I'm sorry that I am late. I was wondering-
At this time, I will close the public hearing on school choice. And now, we will proceed to open the regular meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee Meeting, January 11th, 2021. Could we please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Somebody didn't say it. I don't know it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the nation, indivisible.
I don't know if I did it right or wrong.
And a moment of silence? Thank you.
I can't tell if I'm muted or not.
The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I would like to introduce our student representative, Marissa Olivier.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 7th, 2020 School Committee Meeting. Second? Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Excellent. Thank you. And now for Mr. Bodwell for the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Alden. The first thing I'd like to discuss are the budget presentation. So we'll do it. I'll go back to school choice after, if that's all right. That we have the dates and times from the town to talk with the selectmen, to present to the selectmen on March 17th at 6:50, and to the finance committee on March 18th at 6:50. I know later in the meeting, we're going to discuss the other meeting dates with the school committee, but those will be the meetings that will move forward to the town boards looking for their approval for our FY '22 budget.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have two of the collaboratives that I set on the board of directors for North River Collaborative Annual Report and the Reed's Collaborative Annual Report. Filled with lots of great information, I know that was in your, including your packets. Stephen Donovan, the executive director at North River, and Teresa Craig, executive director at Reed's, spent a lot of time, put a lot of very valuable information into these annual reports. We know that COVID-19 started last year, so that's part of this. There's a lot of discussion throughout the reports about programs and services, vision statements, information on the services that they've provided, and looking at their strategic plans throughout. So a great resource, certainly for me in my first year, getting ingrained into all that goes into being on the board of directors. It's a reference for now and also for later to see where we're moving with both collaboratives. But I've enjoyed my time on the board of directors for both. So I just wanted to present those to you for your review.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bodwell.
An update for athletics. We are happy that our boys' and girls' hoop teams are participating in the winter season. That's middle school and high school. Good to see them out there. It's nice when you walk into the school and you can hear them practicing and so forth. Our girls' ice hockey program with East Bridgewater Web. That's the, well, East Bridgewater is the host of the web team. They're out there as well. An indoor track has been moved to the fall, too, season. So they're looking forward to a little bit of a delay, but that will be exciting. Ms. Hamel, our athletic director, continues to do an outstanding job. She has sent home emails with specific information to each student and family, information that they need to know. It's much different from years past in terms of traveling before and after games. I know Mrs. Page is also working with the students and families as well. Protocols before the game, kids needing to go home and then come back. And then after a JV game, for example, students needing to leave the gym. We are allowing fans to the games. Each athlete has been given a lanyard that allows two parents and siblings to attend the games. There are a number of schools in our league that we have joined into this year. Some are allowing, some aren't. We made the decision to be, as long as they wear masks and socially distant and follow all guidelines that are established, we would like to have the fans in there. They're also doing a great job of broadcasting the games live. I haven't seen it from that, but I've only heard from parents. The viewing experience is very good. Mr. Smith in the TV studio, along with all of his workers, do an outstanding job on a day-to-day basis. They love it because it's experience for them. So we're glad to do that free of charge out there to the families and to the community. So those are kind of the updates on the winter sports. I also wanted to just kind of give an update on the netting along the turf field. Those of you who have driven down 106 and you've seen that the poles have been put up. We're still waiting on one more pole to be put in on the west end of the field, heading towards Hockam Rock Plaza. And the nets themselves will be installed in the springtime. So we're excited about that, so we can get kids out there onto the turf field playing soccer in the spring.
Could I just make a comment? It was fantastic to be able to watch the games on TV or on the computer. The clarity was wonderful. Whoever was filming these past two games did a really steady-hand job following the ball and the action. So that was much appreciated, being on this side of the computer. It was great.
That's awesome.
It was really, I enjoyed it tremendously. It was great. So thank you.
And I think we're still looking forward to football. Correct? I think that they're planning on doing that. Season three, and that starts end of February, I think, after the break, after basketball's over. I think it is. Mayflower might start a little bit later, but I know we're having ongoing discussions with the Mayflower League to see which teams will actually be participating, so we can schedule appropriately. Next, just I want to provide some COVID-19 updates. We have sent out, again, we continue to send out emails any time we have at least one positive case. It was a recommendation by a parent asking us to put the number of active cases out to the families. So we've done that. So we not only list the current active number of student and staff cases, but the total number of cases. All that's reflected on the dashboard. Julie Dietrichson, our lead nurse, has done an outstanding job updating that. We're not only updating when we get additional cases, but when people come off the list. So it's really a daily chore for her to look at that list, to keep it updated. In the last, over last week, we did have the possibility of an in-school transmission. Something that, you know, we are still continuing to investigate. We've had 72 cases in our schools since September 16th. Out of all those, we've identified 143 close contacts. A definition of a close contact is within six feet for more than 15 minutes cumulative. So if this was in fact, and you know, it's all day, it looks like it may have been, well, it definitely was a close contact. So one, now one out of the 143 students that were identified as close contacts tested positive, that's still, you know, we would like 100%, but that's 99.3% of our close contacts have not tested positive when exposed. We continue to work with the administrative team to review all procedures and protocols to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure everyone is safe. One of the things that we continue to do, as you know, we have single desks in classrooms, and sometimes they are moved or placed within that six feet. And that came up this week. So we looked at it. We've found that we have additional close contacts because of that. The people were notified. And we have now remedied that to make sure that every desk is at six feet and not under the six feet. So I give a lot of credit to the maintenance staff, the administrators, and also the teachers, because the teachers are in control of their classrooms. So they're really looking at that day-to-day. So we'll continue to work through all the different procedures and protocols to make sure our kids stay, and kids and staff, stay as safe as possible. And then return to school. Again, we've had these questions, you know, throughout the year. What are we doing to look to more in-person learning? We all believe that in-person learning is best for our kids. So we're looking, you know, Wednesdays to see how we can get more students in on Wednesdays. Because right now, it's a remote learning day. Either, you know, starting hopefully with the elementary school and then the middle, senior, high school to get kids in, even if for half-day on Wednesdays to start that process. We're not looking at going under the six feet. We're just looking to utilize time that's already there. We feel it would be wonderful for our students to be able to be in Cohort A and go to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday on Week 1, and then Cohort B Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Again, growing from probably a half-day schedule to potentially a full-day schedule. So people have asked, so I wanted to put it out there that we're looking at it. We're working with the teachers' union to find the best-fit cohort, you know, students, and make sure, again, everyone stays safe. And that's why we're maintaining the six feet. We're also looking at potential extra stimulus money that's coming through. We've been told that it's going to be factored on our Title I funding at a multiplier of around $3.7 to $3.8. So we're looking at a decent amount of money to use to hopefully that will also find ways to, again, get more kids in and better take care of the needs of our kids. So I just wanted to provide you with some updates, some information on where we stand. Today, we had one case. Our goal is to stay in school as long as it remains safe for our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Just with respect to, I believe it's everyone's intention, the teachers, the parents, and the students to try to get kids into school, physically into school more often. Just trying to put into play that slow trajectory of starting out with a half a day. I believe that's what, you know, the teachers are looking for, is start out with a half-day. It's not something that we can jump right into. That's not fair to them. It's not fair to anybody. But we would like, I would like to also put out there that we are in constant negotiations, the teachers' union and the school committee. And I believe that we have put the district's best intentions on the table, and that being what's best for the kids while staying within the CDC compliance, the six feet. And the Wednesday is a day that is open. It's wide open. I don't, many different circumstances with the same as the four days, with trying to, right now, Wednesdays. Constant negotiations and communications with the teachers. And that's what I'm hearing from parents district-wide, is let's get the kids into school more, as long as it's safe. You know, departments need to be doing a great job, and that's evidenced through the dashboard. We're following goals, and when we find out that we're not because of an error, because of a mistake, then it's rectified. And that's where I think that we're learning that what we are doing, wearing masks, staying the six feet, is working. I just feel that those Wednesdays are a day that can be, you know, utilized.
So the next is, I just lost my- on here is the student representative update. So Marissa Olivier, could you provide us with the student update, please?
Of course. So starting with the middle, senior, and high school, they had some great holiday fun over the break. They had some competition between all the power blocks for the best-themed door. And congratulations went out to Ms. Cronin in the high school and Ms. Martin in the middle school. And Ally Adams created an amazing video of the staff throughout the district singing Jingle Bells to add some holiday cheer. Congratulations went out to band and chorus winners, who will be performing at the Southeastern Music Festival. And the winners were Chris Monopolus, Shelby Lame, and Sky48. And the representatives from the Local Veterans of Foreign Wars Office Award, the winners of this year's contest. So the high school essay, which the question was, is the country the founder, is this country the founders envisioned? Which went out to the three-time winner Eric Ames. And the middle school essay, where the question was, what does patriotism mean to me? Where the winners were Colin Maher and Grace Schnell. For the Howard School. At the Howard School this month, we honored our second group of student superheroes who went above and beyond in classes, as well as fifth grader Mariah Winchell, who raised over $2,700 for the WB Food Pantry by baking and selling treats. Staff went above and beyond covering for classes for others over the last week before vacation. All went above and beyond to support our kids and keep the energy in the building positive. Holiday celebrations were had, and all grades and kids and staff were excited for the first break from a hard-working fall. For the Roseell. Applications were sent out last week to all second and third grade students, inviting them to join Student Council. Students who wish to be considered for candidacy should demonstrate leadership, cooperation, dependability, responsibility, kindness, and wildcat pride. Meetings will be held virtually on Wednesdays, one to two times a month. Completed applications are due by Wednesday, January 20th. This is a great opportunity for any student, those who attend in person or fully remote. Please contact Mrs. Enos, the RLM School Council Advisor, with any questions at jenos@wbridgewater.com. Third graders are also busy learning about areas. Some have drawn and found the areas of robots, while others are starting to map out the areas of rooms in their dream houses. One class even mapped out a game map for Among Us. And for the Spring Street School. The Spring Street School happily welcomed back the students this week. Preschool is learning about growth mindset, the power of yet, and positive self-talk. They listened to the story, "The Little Engine That Could", discuss things that we cannot do yet, and made the little class that could train displays. Each child decorated a train car and completed the sentence, "I think I can." The kindergarten students have eagerly taken on reading sight words and short CVC words. There are also labeling pictures with teen numbers and identifying three states of matter, solid, liquid, and gas. And that's all for me.
That's awesome. That was fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And now, under business. So we do have the 2021-2022 school choice, which is a voting issue. And I believe this has to be done through roll call. It's somewhat of a double negative, as there was no participation or public involvement on the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting. Then it's my understanding that there's really, we're taking a vote not to change school choice. So may I have a motion reflecting that?
Make a motion. Well, Reed's school choice as is for the 21-22 school in-
Moved and second. Are there any discussions? All in favor of a roll call vote? David?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
You know, school choice has been around for quite a while. It started actually when I was the assistant principal, and I've just seen it grow over the years. And it's been a wonderful experience for our kids coming into West Bridgewater. It's refreshing to realize, you know, we don't know who these kids are. When they get here, they're all Wildcats. They kind of mix right in. It provides opportunities due to filling in spaces that we may have in certain grade levels. They've enhanced our academic program, our athletic program, our extracurricular activities. It adds to, you know, a small school feel with big school opportunities. And people know who they are. You know, when they come here, if they're coming from a larger school, everyone in West Bridgewater knows their name. And it's really just, I'm glad we're able to continue it. I welcome meeting these families from outside of West Bridgewater, because I think it just enhances all the great things we already have going on. And just so people know that, you know, since it's been approved, the application will be available online tomorrow. And the process closes, the registration closes Friday, February 19th, which is the Friday of school vacation.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. And moving on, under business. Yes, that's the additional budget meeting dates? Is that what you mean? Excellent. Yes. So, Mr. Bodwell, or just if you have any other dates. So again, the regular meeting, the next one for school committee is February 8th.
Correct.
I believe that there's possibly an additional meeting of February 22nd. Would that be something for the other members to, would that be available? David?
It's the day before the bar.
Oh. Uh-oh. Let's go to March first.
Okay. Thank you.
Will you still be around?
Yeah.
I don't know. That would be great. March, yes, March, yes. And Donna?
I know we've asked, we've done the six. Is that a, maybe more, or is it six thirty?
Six would be fine, if that's fine with everybody. Sure. All right. So that would be, so the second one would be for March 1st. And then our next regular meeting would be March 8th. So I would have liked to have two meetings in there, but I think right now, if we need to, I guess, if we need to maybe meet earlier for the March 8th meeting, for some reason, maybe we could do that.
Absolutely. Or we could meet earlier, or we could meet between 8th and the selectman the following week.
So we could follow it after the regular meeting.
Clearly, I defer to you, but I'm certainly open for as many meetings as we need.
Okay. Does that work for, would that work for everybody? If we could do it on that instead of before the March 8th?
Yeah. I would rather. That is February vacation, but it doesn't matter to me. I'm around. Oh, March 15th. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Also, it'd be the week after.
We do March first, and then the 15th?
So we'll do, well, well, yes. Let us put it in for March 15th now, and then if we don't need it, we can decide that at the March 8th meeting. Is that fair? And then we can take it off the calendar. Does that work? Donna, are you saying that you would want more time to review it between?
Well, I didn't. I thought that's what direction we were going in, but...
When is the budget going to be ready to be presented?
Good question. We plan to have, you know, information to you for February meeting. I'm not sure, you know, whatever procedures and protocols we've used in the past, we're going to continue to do. So having it available February 8th, and then the next time we meet, we'll go into more detail, run through line by line, when the second meeting is set up.
Until March 1st?
Right. Yeah, so we'll have the budget February 8th.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'll have plenty of time to review it. And the March 15th, if we need that second meeting, that would be probably good because it's closer to when we meet with the, you know.
Right. And then that could be determined at the March 1st meeting if we need additional time. Does that make sense?
Well, March.
March 1st, March 8th. Right. Sorry. Okay. All right. So let me restate that just to make sure. So February 8th is our regularly scheduled meeting. And we're saying that we will, March 1st will be an additional meeting for 6:00 PM. And we'll be here. So, okay, not literally. And then our next scheduled meeting would be for March 8th. And now we will put on for March 15th as an additional meeting at 6:00 PM. And we will determine at the March 8th meeting whether the 15th stays on the books or not. Is that right? All right. And then just to reiterate, the board of selectmen meeting is March 17th at 6:50 PM. And then finance is March 18th at 6:50 PM. Excellent. Okay. All right. That'll be busy. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve that schedule that was presented? The voting moved. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. And now, Mrs. Smith?
Our next Inclusion Matters workshop is on January 28th at 7:00 PM, and it's Teaching Social Competency. So for all information about how to log in, go to our Facebook page. And if you aren't on Facebook, you can contact the Special Ed Office at the Spring Street School.
Thank you so much. And now, under warrants. The following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year 2021. There were five bill warrants dated December 3rd, 2020 in the amount of $40,074.70, dated December 10th, 2020, in the amount of $142,045.71. A warrant dated December 17th, 2020, in the amount of $101,405.05. A warrant dated December 24th, 2020, in the amount of $53,758.38. And the last bill warrant dated December 31st of 2020 in the amount of $34,436.90. Well, on my paper, I have $142. Excellent. So $42,000 and, I believe, $45.71. That's a big difference, isn't it? So I will fact-check that one. Get back, and we'll clarify that at the next meeting, if that's okay. Because again, it's another digit off. I'm not sure if it's 450 or 45. It could be 450. So we will definitely highlight December 10th. Thank you very much. I wasn't looking at the screen. I was looking at paper. Our two payroll warrants. One dated December 11th of 2020 in the amount of $547,190.50. And a second payroll warrant dated December 24th, 2020 in the amount of $51,262.06. So again, I will go back for that December 10th to get the exact amount. But as always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the selectman's office for review. Thank you very much. And under the public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during this public forum.
Hello, this is Jamie Pope, I hope I'm doing it in the right order this time. And I would ask to be recognized to speak.
Yes, hello.
Hello. So, um, on the phone right now is myself, Jamie Pope, um, and my husband.
Timothy Pope.
Um, uh, we are residents of West Bridgewater and parents of three children in the school district. Um, I just want to state that we are both speaking as parents tonight, um, and not as employees of, of the town of West Bridgewater. Um, we were, of course, upset, um, probably an understatement, um, and disappointed, uh, to learn that desks at the Howard School were not placed six feet apart. This is a concern to me as elementary students eat at their desks without their masks apart. Um, this resulted in a case of transmission, um, from one student to another. Um, and because I, uh, am I allowed to break confidentiality of my own child?
No. No.
Okay, I just figured I would. That's okay, I figured I would ask. We would like to commend the educators for identifying the issue. We would also like to commend and thank the principal, Mr. McLaughlin, and superintendent Mark Bodwell, the custodians, and everybody else, including the nursing staff. Um, Julie Dietrichson, in investigating the occurrence, letting us know, and then remediating the situation. It is important, when an issue is identified, that an investigation is performed. preventive actions or remediation are put in place. And today we just wanted to make a statement about preventative actions. We know, and Mr. Bodwell stated the numbers, that one student, um, dropped the transition from 100% to 99.3 or four, whatever the number was. But we would like to remind the school committee that that slight drop has a face to its child. And we would like you to keep that in mind during future discussions, that hopefully lessons have been learned, and that no other family should experience what this other family is now. And so therefore, we would respectfully ask the school committee to take this to heart and to think of this student when efforts are made to reduce spacing between desks and students. Thank you for your time.
Um, may I just address, um, Mrs. Pope and Mr. Pope, thank you for taking the time to put your thoughts together in a very constructive manner. And I, um, on behalf of the school committee, and I, I believe I can speak for everyone that, yes, every, um, piece of data has a face, has a name, and has a personality. Um, and we do recognize that. Um, and yes, remediation has been underway. And when we talk about trying to get the kids into school on a more, you know, more physical basis, um, more often, particularly Wednesdays, uh, that is not, um, simultaneous with lowering the six-feet requirement, or the mask-wearing, or the hand washing, or any of the other practices that we are doing now. So I just wanted to reassure you and the rest of the district of that, that when we're looking to try to get students into the schools more often, it's not at the cost or the effect of lowering our standards or the CDC requirements and the state mandates. So I thank you for your time and for your input. And I'm not sure if Mr. Bodwell would like to say anything.
And I also want to say thank you again for bringing this to our attention. Uh, we do feel it's incredibly important. This, the, this one row was one row in one classroom, but that still is one row too many. And that's why we've addressed it, uh, we've taken corrective actions. And again, we feel as parents, uh, that, you know, we know how important your children are, and they should be. And, and so if there's something that bothers you, something that upsets you, you have concerns, please let us know, and we'll absolutely do everything we can to address it uh, and take the corrective actions necessary. So thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address, um, under the public forum?
There's nothing in the chat, and I can't believe them, yep. Oh, that's right, from the phone, right, but.
Oh.
Yeah. No, it's all right, and, um, the volume's up, and I don't think anyone's speaking, so.
All right, so turn that on, off?
Okay.
Not to my kids. Okay. All right. Moving on to the calendar. For the district-wide meetings, for school council meetings, the Spring Street February 1st at 3:00 PM, which will be virtual. The Rose L. McDonald, um, I don't have a date for that on my Oh, is it, okay, so I'm going to look at the, um, screen now, instead of my old form, I apologize. So at the Rose L. McDonald, January 25th, 2021, at 3:30 PM, which is virtual. At the Howard School will be January 12th tomorrow, at 2:45 PM, which will be virtual. February's meeting will be February 8th, 2021, at 2:45 PM, as well as virtual for that, too. Regarding the PTO, there's a January 26th uh, meeting at 7:00 PM in the Rose L. McDonald Cafeteria. And the Student Services Coffee Hour, which will be January 27th at 9:00 AM, which is virtual. Student Services Coffee Hour, so that would be for you, Mrs. Marvel, correct? Excellent. Okay, thank you. And the Inclusion Matters, the next meeting, as stated, I believe, by Molly Smith, is January 28th at 7:00 PM. And it's a presentation on teaching social competency, which will be virtual. Next. Thank you. Under the middle, senior, high school, the athletic posters meeting is, uh, Wednesday, January 13th at 7:00 PM, which is virtual. The senior dinner, which was rescheduled from December, is now January 14th at 5:00 PM in the middle, senior, high school cafeteria. Cannot wait for that. There's such a positive vibe for that, I'm excited. Uh, report cards, February 5th, 2021, the report cards will be distributed. For the Howard School, the report cards will be distributed February 5th, 2021. And next, all right. At the Rose L. McDonald, the principal's coffee hour is January 21st at 9:30 AM, which is virtual. And report cards will be distributed on February 5th, 2021. And at the Spring Street School, principal's coffee hour is January 19th at 9:30 AM, which is virtual. And the report cards will also be distributed February 5th, 2021, for the Spring Street School. And I believe that is it. The next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, February 8th at 6:30 PM uh, for the middle, uh, here at the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. And it will, uh, also be available through the link that we'll provide, this will be a closed meeting, I guess we could say, it's just our attendance as of now. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Move second, in favor? Excellent, good night, thank you.